Yeah, it's five oh five, sorry for the delay, but we'll call the meeting of the Mount Vernon School Board to end session here. Welcome to all our lovely guests tonight, this evening. And do we need to read public input?
No, I posted it, I posted it on the Zoom, so you're fine there. But you just have to open public input.
Okay, so at this point, first of two public inputs, and we have a larger audience than normal, so if any of our guests would like to speak. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Here, listen.
I'm sorry?
I'm here to listen.
The only comment would be to speak up. So that we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you.
Project Pete.
Um, I have a question here, I'm under the impression that you'll be speaking about the seventh grade situation, that's why.
Yes.
Okay.
That's our primary focus today, so. Um, and the next agenda item is number three for personnel. And I'll go to Mr. Barry for nominations, so I appreciate the work in between meetings. As people know, we had a resignation of a part-time music instructor, Jack Ward. He virtually approved it, but I need a motion to officially approve the resignation of Jack Ward. That, that'd be great.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
Uh, with regret, all those in favor of the resignation?
To do a roll call?
Yeah.
Yeah. Roll call.
Yeah, so.
Is Andrew, okay, Andrew is there?
Andrew, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Thank you.
So we'll start with you, Mr. Stokich, if you heard the motion to accept the resignation.
Uh, yeah. So good, yeah.
Amber, yes?
Pinkly, yes.
And Eckoff, yes, so it passes with regret, four nothing. Yeah, absolutely, so thank you very much, appreciate that. And then, um, a- as people know, we did a very, uh, very happily filled position with a qualified instructor. Um, and by the board to make the nomination to approve Susan Price as the next music teacher part-time at Mount Vernon.
I'll make that motion.
You made a motion, uh, to accept Susan Price as our new part-time music instructor. Uh, do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
We have a second, all those in favor will do a roll call again, Andrew?
So, Sogen, do you have?
Amber, yeah?
Pinkly, yes.
Eckoff, yes. Thank you all, I appreciate that. Thanks Pete, and. Just real quick, if you want, do you have any texture about Susan Price, I mean, I read her resume, it looks like it's a real good fit. It's a good fit, it's, it's good timing, it's, uh, you know, Susan is an experienced educator. Uh, with the, the tardiness or the lateness of the summer, uh, when, um, uh, Jackie was able to find a full-time position, we were, you know, a little bit of a, uh, nervous, a little bit, yeah, but we were able to, to meet Susan. Very good, you know, qualified, very experienced, and, uh, she's gonna be good for the building, and good for the kids, and a little experience for her to come in and, and, and work in that capacity. Uh, you're pretty excited?
Yeah, so Suzanne, yeah, she's taught for quite a while. Um, she's a local, and I think she's excited to give back to her community, so.
Excellent. All right, next.
Agenda. Facilities.
Okay, so the next item up is our presentation discussion on status of our building.
I appreciate, and I appreciate, um, the out-of-order board meeting this Monday in August. We're, um, working closely with Harriman Associates on trying to stay current with their timeline. Uh, and so this is, um, gets an opportunity for the community and, uh, building, uh, facility meeting committee members, as well as the board to weigh in on what we're talking about tonight, is the educational specifications for a building that would support a program. And so that's what we're going to talk about in the process. So just a little bit about context and how we got here, so in January two thousand twenty-two, um, Mount Vernon Middle School Committee, under the direction of Adam Steele, presented a report to the Mount Vernon School Board. Um, and that report was definitely a resource in this work. Um, so one of the drivers to that work of that committee was the pending impact of the Amherst Middle School project. At one point, eighty-five million dollars was thought from Clark Wilkins and the middle school was going to the Amherst community. And the concern was, if the Amherst Middle School project gets bonded, how would that impact the tuition and cost per student? So that was a real piece of this work. Now, since then, the Amherst School District has moved, uh, away, and there is no bond imminent regarding the improvements they have over the last few years and projected improvements to the building through fund balance and savings, not through a bond, now that could change. Um, but that's not, um, imminent. Um, the one other piece that was part of the Amherst project that could impact the Mount Vernon tuition, is if fifth grade moves to Clark Wilkins, how that, that enrollment then impacts the sixth through eight and the divisor, which impacts the school tuition rate. That is still part of the. Um, so that's still part of the plan. So, um, so that was the context to why the Mount Vernon Middle School Committee was formed and many recommendations to the board in January of two thousand twenty-two. They also did some great work that was a resource for this on projecting possible staffing needs. And they had three different recommendations to the board. Take a look at the tuition, look at keeping them, uh, developing a building for a K-eight or going to a tuition anywhere model. And they didn't do much research on that, but that was one of the three options where seven, eighth graders could tuition anywhere, they want to go to Goshen, go to Goshen. And so, but that wasn't dug in. Um, so.
Not one of the things we discussed. Keep your facts straight.
So it was listed in the.
Last one was not an option that was discussed. We discussed building our own middle school. That was the third option.
But it was, just if you read the report, it was number three in the report, but you're right, it was not discussed, and it was just mentioned as a possible, it's in the report. Because I read the report.
I don't know who, who wrote such a report, but it was not mentioned by that committee at all. Who wrote the report?
It is in the report as a line.
Who was, who wrote the report, who's the author of the report?
Adam Steele, it was Adam Steele wrote the cover memo when submitted to the Mount Vernon Board in January of two thousand twenty-two, I believe. So, but, um, I apologize. I can just tell that it was, you're right, it wasn't in-depth, but it was an option out there, one of the three options. So what has gone since then? Um, there was an article proposed for a sixty thousand dollar facility study in March of twenty-three. That article passed. And the scope of the facility, facility study expanded beyond the seventh and eighth grade. Included two other components. Um, due to the change of leadership and, and, and reflections on certain departments, so the scope was there's, under this facility study, there was three areas. One, to explore and cost out a preschool program. Two was to take a look at, we have enrollment projections, projections that would significantly change the class size and the number of students in class size projected and symphony here on campus, so those are the three areas of the scope that Harriman is working on. Um, and there are a strong, we're gonna go through preschool, we're gonna go through the enrollment, and we're gonna go through the educational specifications of symphony. Um, and one of the things that we did this summer was that we interviewed administrators from two like-sized K-eight schools to help us understand what a K-eight program in a school about the same size as a Mount Vernon K-eight school would look like. And they were very beneficial and very informative meetings to help define the specs about what current program is. Everybody okay, so that's the goal for tonight. Uh, as the board and the community, I, I, I do want to to create a little bit of sense of urgency and the significance of these decisions related to building going forward. Um, these are the decisions you make about the scope and what, what happens are thirty-year decisions. You will live with the decisions you make for thirty years. Also, the payment could be up to, you could be paying for these decisions, a ten-year bond, twenty-year bond, or even more. And also time, and one thing we've learned at Amherst, the, the timing and the, in the cost, for example, one thing that Amherst is wrestling with, my first year here, a bond went to the town for eighty-five million, and based on the interest rate during that year, the impact on the taxes would be the same as a bond half that size when the interest rates went three times. And what we know, the construction was never cheap, construction's gone up every year. The interest rate fluctuation is real, but construction's never cheaper than the day. We haven't seen an Amherst construction going down. We also have to be very cognizant, once you have trucks, once you're building, it'd be very, very cognizant about, you know, that they're here, like, um, sometimes twenty-year decisions are really wrestled with and, and barriers to learning. For, for example, and Anne knows, like, we are right now working about renovating science labs at the annex that were built, not, not intended as science labs, converted to science labs, but we're struggling with them because they don't meet minimum requirements. So those decisions made a long time ago, we're working to correct now, so. I also, in the district that I worked in, made a decision about the location of a gym. For twenty years, it's going to be not best practice, you actually have to walk across the gym floor in the middle of winter to get to the stands, and you know, so you have to be very careful about the permanence and long-lasting of these decisions because it's very difficult to fix it after you do it, so the planning and the collaboration piece like that. So let's talk about preschool, so both model schools were P through A, it was Hampton, Hampton Elementary in Plymouth and Northwood Elementary in Northwood. So just a little bit about preschool, so the way preschool works is we are required by law to put a notice out twice a year in, in the newspaper or any published, uh, publication we can to say that if you have a three- or four-year-old, you can come and get evaluated in our school for services. So that's child fine. And so you put a notice out, oh, I'm a little concerned about my son Chase, I'm gonna bring him to school and get evaluated. That's one way preschool families get noticed. The other is through a physician, through Gateway in Nassau, physician can refer to our local agency who then connects us with the school. Um, so currently, we have, so last year, so the thing about preschool is it is absolutely rolling. It's not like preschool are eligible, they're eligible when they turn three or when they turn four. So last year, at the end of the year, we had fourteen students getting related services in ages three or four, seven of which are matriculating now to kindergarten, you women? And this year, so far, as in August twenty-sixth, we have eight. But when, in, in September, when three more turn three, you're, it'll grow as the year grows. It's not like the first day of school in preschool, it's rolling.
And those are just Mount Vernon children?
Just Mount Vernon. And there is, we have one student in Mount Vernon who attends a full program at the preschool in Clark Wilkins on a tuition basis. So, um, the concerns are about, um, if we can't find a location for kids, then what do, you know, Goshen, this last year, we looked at Goshen, we looked at other places. And also about are, are we providing the appropriate services through a related service versus a half-day multiple-week program? And that's Dr. Heather Jennings, but, uh, most schools, and, and, and something that is now in the mix, in some districts, even in New Hampshire, you're hearing the words Universal Creek. Where every student is eligible for preschool because earlier intervention is so valuable and such a high-lever strategy. So we are looking for preschool, a one, one classroom, a bud classroom size and a half, it's about thirteen, fourteen square feet. Harriman will actually determine that, because they know the reg, and, but you think about it, it's a classroom space for, for littles, it has a meeting space, because there's so many intake meetings in preschool program. Where they have OT, speech, PT, related service, and a teaching space. And we think to staff it, we would need just a halftime teacher and maybe some increase in related services, but we feel good, so. One recommendation is to say to Harriman, can you please plan on the site a preschool? Now, alls we're doing is today, or at the next meeting, whatever you desire, is, we're not making any financial decisions. We're just asking Harriman to include in their, uh, concept design a preschool. The board has lots of decision time to make whether or not we want to include this in funding, but right now, it's giving Harriman marching orders to design the, uh, the campus with a preschool. You with me? So that's the preschool component. So let's talk, I guess, let's see if I can blow it up. I'm sorry, I can't blow that up, so think a little bit, so the SAU thirty-nine converted to employing NESDEC, New England School Development Council, to project enrollment. And, um, there, and if we go, if you can't see it, I apologize. Um, but eventually, there is a fifth grade at fifty-eight, a fifth grade at fifty-seven, and a sixth grade at sixty, wow. So, and those are projected by students who are already born, right there, this isn't super projection, this is projection about where we know that they're already here. So, uh, that would, if we didn't, if we didn't expand the campus, we would be like, we could look at thirty, two classes of thirty, classes of twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and that would be significantly different than the, the standard here at Mount Vernon Village School. Originally, and Amy, Mike, and I, and Heather, we've been talking about this, that if you look at a one-classroom bubble space, one for the lower school, one for the upper school, or just, uh, or two, I'm sorry, two or one. Based on projection, there really is only one year at a time that you'd have the super bubble. So, um, now, and, and we're gonna talk a minute about the impact of the middle school project on enrollment bubble. But if we were just talking a bubble, we need one additional classroom, so when that sixty goes through, instead of having two thirties, we have three twenties. You women?
Mm-hmm.
That's an expanding footprint for a projected enrollment bubble. So that's the second part of the scope, so to, today or next meeting, Harriman, we would like you to take a look at adding an additional classroom for enrollment bubble in your design. That's the, we don't have to, there's no funding, it's just what kind of design?
So, does that, is that eight years from now, that sixty?
So the, it's fifty-seven is in thirty, thirty-one, so the biggest.
Seven years.
And there's a fifty-three, which is twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty.
Yeah, so in eight years, there'll be sixty students projected.
Correct, okay. So, so far, we get the preschool, understand why we want preschool, and we have an impact of eight years, seven years, nine years, depending when we go on a bubble. You women? Everybody okay? So now, the big one is let's talk about middle school, seven and eight. So, the question, the, the essential question is, what are the educational specifications for the building to deliver the educational program that meets the student needs? The student needs as defined by this community and this board. And, uh, there's recommendations coming from the leadership team just for discussion, right? And things can change, but that's what we're trying to determine, what facility, and then obviously what staffing would need to deliver a seven, eight program in mo, both model schools and other schools, you really are looking at a school within the school model. So, both model schools had K, uh, either a five through eight, K-four or a K-five, six through eight, so you do configure them in a way to groupings and for instruction, so it's not simply, but that's really, it's grouping for activities and like stuff, um, so when you're thinking about this, it's not just a K-eight, it's really a school within a school, very common, um, in schools. Everybody okay?
Yeah.
So, based on, what do we need, we need, and this was base member, we, we spent about three hours with lead, uh, administrators of schools about the same sentence. So we would need two seventh-grade classrooms. Right, because, and we would need two eighth-grade classrooms. We would need a technology classroom, so a K-through-eight technology program. This varies, this was not mentioned in the Mount Vernon, um, middle school report, just to be honest, that this came, so what you, one of the things that we have to decide is what is the menu of specials in a small-ish middle, uh, K-through-eight school? And based on Northwood and Hampton, discussions with Tom and us, that having a technology program is very important, being kids who can code, who can work on the applications, do all that, we believe is important, we need a music classroom. We need a world language classroom, all the K-eight schools have, they have a world language program. And here's the big one, highly recommended by both Northwood and Hampton, we need a gymnasium. And the, and I appreciate that, that if you continue with a cafeteria or the, then the, the issue is, and it is a culture change, then you're eating lunch in classrooms. And if you're eating lunch in classrooms, that changes everything, because then you have duties and you have to hire more people. So, um, when you go to a seven, eight, because you need physical education now, right, K-eight, and if you just have a cafeteria, right, then half the day, just under half the day, the, the cap is lunch. So in the winter, there isn't time to have physical, it would be physical education, and I, and this was both schools said they could not operate an effective educational program without a second space gym for um, education, just.
Did anyone ask the question about adding a cafeteria instead of a gym?
And that, that would be fine either way, you just need to, both, we just, we need.
There's a very big difference.
Sure, and, and also, Anne, thank you, also, there was two distinct spaces.
I agree.
That's, and, and whatever, and Harriman, we could ask them to do both ways. Um, because I thank you for that new one, so I was trying to get, I apologize for, I was trying to get at two distinct spaces. Um, because that's critical to the education of kids, whether you add a gym or use this one now as a full gym, I, I pick it up or you're putting down, and then you add a cap, totally pick it up or you're putting down. So this is the regular ed, what we need for regular ed, world language, music, we have an art space, we need a technology space, two seventh, two eighth. World language gym, yeah.
Can someone tell us what we have now?
We have, we don't have any of those spaces now.
Correct. What do we have now, presently?
For specials?
In, no. In this, I have been in this building with a child in thirty years, so let's say what we have now.
Two classrooms for every grade level.
Okay.
We have a shared, I don't know, take it from there, shared music art space, right? Yeah, well, the, uh, yeah, the music space is the, is the stage in the NPR.
Okay.
And, uh, and then we have an art room, uh, the music teacher teaches out of the art room one day a week. Um, yeah, fourteen classrooms. We have some smaller office spaces and, you know, meeting spaces, but that's.
Thank you very much, I, we didn't know what we have.
Please. There used to be a computer room on the other side of this, is that, well, I, I mean, I haven't been to the building in years.
That's the art room, through this wall here.
It's the art room on the other side of.
Oh, it's the art room now, so what was the computer room is gone.
Mm-hmm. Do we not have a computer room now?
No computer.
Ah, we should tour the building someday.
Happy, happy to make that happen, so. Um, so the, the, the three areas, right, preschool, bubble, and middle school are connected in that, if you, if this community board wanted to pursue the middle school, then there would be less pressure on the bubble. Because in the years of the bubble, the world language class can become a classroom, right, a grade-level classroom, and world language could be taught in other classrooms. So long-term, and the board can do all the efficiency, what we know is, especially world language, having a designated space for world language over twenty years is what's best. So, they are connected, if this was supported by the community or some variation of this, then you can get rid of the bubble. But if there's no middle school, we need a bubble. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I just wanted to see how they're connected, everybody okay? So this is regular ed. Okay? Special ed, we're looking at a half-classroom. About seven hundred square feet, six hundred square feet, for small group instruction, related services, meeting space, and teacher space. For seventh and eighth grade to add, we need about another half-classroom to support an additional special ed program. That's what we need for special ed.
So we know, we don't have a special ed classroom now?
We have small spaces.
Correct. So we're talking about adding a half-classroom?
Yes.
If the seventh and eighth grade comes in?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Everybody okay?
Yeah.
So that's special ed, regular ed, symphony. So, some other discussions we've had with Harriman as, when we interviewed them and the board, and so one of the things that is of interest is, and it can be done, is taking a look at the security and access to this building. The current F-access, which is not considered controlled, because once you get buzzed in, you are then have access to a kindergarten classroom and the school. So it's not considered best practice. Um, so we would also, this is totally up to the board, but within the sixty thousand, we, right now, we have, we can ask Harriman to design as an alt a more secure best-practice entrance, again, not fun, this is just a design. Harriman will also understand when, if you, how, what kind of storage we have there, and what kind of hallway space, it's not pure, right? We're just not adding hall, uh, classroom space, because you have to add a hallway to access. You women? And the other piece, and this is more, it's professional to my experience, this building is not sprinklered. And in my past community, one, the, and I know, the, the library in Hoptington was hit by lightning and it was not sprinklered. That's where I used to work for a few years. And it burned. When that happened, there was a greater sense of urgency to sprinkler all-town buildings. And the elementary school was part of the project that I left, was sprinklered. So, a-again, something to think about, I can't look at you, and, and Mike and I can't look at you and say, we, we want to make sure people know that this building is not sprinklered. And it's not an easy thing, but it is a thing. We can sprinkler this building, or at least get the design or cost if we wanted it.
Would our piping system that's currently here be able to support a sprinkler system?
So, in HOP, they had to create a cistern, they had a pump-up with cistern, and then whole new, there is like one little place that's in this building, and one closet is sprinklered, which is kind of funky.
Yeah, yeah, no, there's just.
So it would, they, they come in.
With the piping in general.
So they put new pipes?
Yeah.
The sprinklers, but you have to worry about, um, town, I assume it is a town hall?
No, no.
It works well.
There would be a cistern associated with it, as it will be with the new library, it's a, every development in town is required to put in a cistern.
Got you.
So.
Just to.
No, I'm just, I'm just concerned because Mount Vernon had to make up its full day because we had, we couldn't have school because the pipes weren't working.
It's not filled under well.
No.
No, right, we, we, we have giant, HOP has a giant cistern, it's cool, it's kind of fun.
So my concern would be if we're doing a sprinkler system, if we keep the current piping.
It would be all, the sprinklers, when they, when they sprinklered, the building in HOP is all sprinkler pipes.
Yeah. So is there?
They're usually separate.
Right.
They're not part of the, the, uh, drinking water, they're separate, and with a separate source.
Is there an aspect of this talking about redoing the pipes?
No. Not yet, I mean, uh, Harriman, this is about specs. So this night is about the educational specifications, with a little bit thrown in about safety, you want safety and security, and um, the sprinkler system. Um, Roger is working with Harriman about the life safety and all the HVAC stuff, but this is directing Harriman to design what kind of education, you women?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So staffing. Um, just to talk about staffing, um. Can I? Please, please.
It's not so much about, directly if I'm wrong, it's not so much about the piping, it's well capacity. So that's something that we've been monitoring, or Roger has been monitoring on a regular basis, because there is concern as we run now.
Yeah.
The capacity of the well, to keep, so obviously.
So we're over capaca, kind of teetering.
We would have to have a look at our well capacity.
Yeah.
And if we went to sprinkler system, we would absolutely positively have to have a cistern to supply the water needed.
Yeah.
Because the well would not be able to fist off a set.
You got it.
Yeah.
You know, right on.
So it's, it's a well capacity issue more than the infrastructure of the pipes, I think that's what caused our day out.
Yeah.
Was the fact that it was a well issue.
Yeah. Yeah.
So before we get into staffing, just to see where we are. The Ed specs for the middle school program includes four teachers plus world language plus technology and plus space for existing specials. The, the new positions are the technology position, and, and at the time of the middle school report, there was a point six world language, which went because we couldn't fill it, so that would now be one point O, which you could fill. Right, you know, because it's full-time positions, it would be a very attractive position, a K eight world language program in Mount Vernon. And so that's the educational specifications, and then we had, right, we had a half a person for, uh, special ed, you women? So the staff, the staffing is very ish, all right, and, but it's there, so four grade level teachers, that's what we need, that's the seventh, eighth grade, we need a point two art to make that a full time. We need a point four music to make that full time. We need a point four PE to make that full time. We need a halftime help, you have to offer help when you go to seventh and eighth, uh, to a full-time tech and a full-time world language. Those are the staffing needs. And then for special ed, I guess I had, uh, yeah, I was preschool, sorry, we need a one point O special ed teacher for seventh and eighth. Heather's not sure, but I just don't want to be honest and overestimate, we may need a halftime school cycle, and we may need another fifth of OT. That was, excuse me, that was not IP by IP analysis, this was just a discussion. But it is a one, for seventh and eighth grade, we would need a special ed teacher with me for the seventh and eighth grade. A little bit more school cycle, a little bit OT, so we need one point, the seven point five regular ed and one point seven special ed. Um, but that comes after, right, that's what we figured, but that's, I want to be honest with about ish about staffing. Everybody okay?
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Where do you teach help?
Um, I would teach help and, and I would go help to the classrooms.
Okay, so the person would not have a classroom, they would be a.
For a halftime help, you can actually, if, if the gym is open, you can, sometimes you teach help, but typically help. I, I, I'm not, we're not recommending a designated for a halftime help teacher. Good question.
Are all of these slides available, will be available online?
They will be.
Okay.
Uh, right after this, I give them to Chelsea, she throws them off.
Okay.
Everybody okay? So what's next? The purpose of this, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but the purpose of this is to provide guidance for Harriman to conceptually design a school based on the educational specifications as directed by the Mount Vernon School Board. Okay, so they will incorporate storage, and they'll figure out to do this, and to Ann's point, we direct them to look for a second distinct space gym versus, right, they will design it that way. And once they design it, then we cost it. And then the board decides, preschool's not it, that's an alt, we don't do that, the entry isn't it. Can't afford it, the middle school, whatever the middle school is, and the middle school portion of this, as Amy and I spoke today, it's a math problem, right? The math problem is staff plus building expense, including maintenance, right, including all the maintenance. Is that greater than or less than the current tuition bill to Amherst Middle School? And if there's a variance on the increase, is that increase enough to have the great, represent increased value? That is worth the bump, you women? And we don't have those numbers yet, but first what we have to do is tell Harriman what the educational specifications are, they design that. And then we work with them, and there's money in the scope, um, in the article to get, and Roger, uh, in his work, in his career, he, before he brings anything to the town, he gets a construction management costing, someone who will stand behind the number. And so first we design, then we cost, and then the board decides, yes, yes, no, no. Right, what can I, and, and interview from the community. And then they determine at what point, what goes to the town, is it, oh, we're just going to do the bump in preschool? Because the cost of the staff, the cost of the building, that delta between that and the current tuition, even though if you read the report, one of the concerns about the middle school AMS is the fluctuation or the instability in the tuition. That's that, so all those factors have to be factored in when you consider the equation, you with me? So Harriman at some point would like to know, yes, we need a second space for gym, and, and they'd like to know, we'd like to know how many classrooms we'd like. What kind of preschool size we're talking about, you know, and they know, um, what, what, how many classrooms for the projected bubble? And how many classrooms for the middle school, which we just presented. Once we give them the go-ahead, they design.
So is the design going to be minimum spec or room to grow?
Great question, and really that's in the direction of the board, this. Um, and then again, Amy and I talked about this. With a technology room and a world language room, there is growth there. Because both of those, it's not great, but if there's bubbles, can be taught at other locations.
I mean, you twenty year projection, I mean, as your discussion, do you really want to visit, revisit this conversation twenty years? So, I mean, you have both models, we'll have both models between minimum spec, this is the cost, and then you have, okay, here's some room to grow and to maintain. Or in, you know, another twenty-five percent, or, you know, even additional two classrooms does wonders.
Yes.
Does wonders.
I am in your back.
You're, you're, you're talking about having health in the classroom, six, seven, eighth graders, I'd rather have not, you know, I'd push that aside to a separate classroom, and I'm always speaking through how I grew up in elementary school, I mean, as we all, I mean, so I mean.
Well, and the other thing too was, if in eight years we need three sixth grade classrooms, then we only have two seventh and eighth graders, where is the other twenty kids going?
So that, that bubble classroom becomes a seventh, that bubble becomes an eighth.
What, so like you were saying, why wouldn't we see what the proposal would be to keep the world language and the technology room? Plus have three classrooms for seventh and eighth.
So I, I appreciate it, and the problem is how difficult it is in New Hampshire to pass a bond.
Yeah.
And you're talking of, like, we, a back of the envelope. If you're talking eleven staff, you're at one point two, one point three million dollars right there. We pay about one point five million right now in tuition, so just the staff, we just talked about one point three. The bond is somewhere between four and seven hundred thousand dollars. Depending on if you go, if I'm principal, or that level, principal, right, there's some other things to do, so you're talking, this, this is ish, this is just wicked up in the stratosphere, but we're going to get hard notes. Like we can, when we will get our average new hire cost, we will use for the expanding the people. And we will have real numbers from the New Hampshire Bond Bank on, if it's an eight million dollar project, don't quote me, if it's an eight million dollar project, and it's a three point seven five percent interest, the bond somewhere between four and seven hundred. So you're right now, you're at one point six to one point nine million, which is over your tuition over there. Now, there's a bump and there's a red delta. But when you start, and I love what you're talking about, when you start talking about adding classrooms, it's four hundred thousand dollar classroom.
But is this something that we would revisit in twenty to thirty years?
If, if you can get a project to last twenty years, I'd sleep well. Like Ann, I mean, I was trying to think, and when I, I'm old and I started this a long time ago. Hollis Brookline expanded twice, right, they, they built a core, I was there, I was there when the new school opened, they, they expanded twice, got up to what, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred kids. South Eagan expanded, right, got up with the annex. Bo didn't expand, Litchfield didn't expand, Bedford hasn't expanded, I don't think.
So South Eagan was built for eight hundred, the annex added four hundred, we're now at seven hundred, so that bubble cost
Right.
Millions of dollars.
Right.
And.
Because there was a thing, and there was a thing for a while, building a new school, people come to. I mean, it was Hollis Brookline, when, when I was at Hollis.
To your point, right, right there, to your point, those projections are just that.
Yes.
So that's what, that's the main thought you have to keep in mind, right there, because those are projections, and the town is changing.
Yeah.
So those projections certainly educate the town and everyone here. But you need room to grow, and to, to that point, to that exact one. So you're, that's, it's just going to need to be.
Now, there was some building in New Hampshire that, the building that did not, but for a while, it was. And, um, you know, HOP did a ten million dollar project, they haven't seen it grow. Bo was built for it, and they squeezed a little bit, but they didn't have to expand, Belmont didn't grow. I don't think Campbell grew much after they built theirs. Um, but with it.
If you build a school, they will come, no, but we're seeing already the trend of the town.
No, I, and these are, these are big money decisions that the board is going to make, because I'm with you, because what you don't, and this is something Amy, Mike and I were working about in Amherst, what we the nightmare is you do the building project, and then you have to buy a freaking portal.
Oh, yeah.
And I, run me out of town, I, right, we talk about that, because you don't want, right? I mean, so that's the thing, is we want to build, we don't want a portal.
My kids went to high school in the portal.
Yeah.
After I helped build that, maybe until school.
Yeah.
Please.
Much did anyone, if, if I'll look at using the annex for the seventh and eighth grade.
It was.
Talked about multiple times in review.
And what did you think?
There's a lot of logistical obstacles to making that happen from a labor standpoint, that's.
Okay. So he didn't say no.
So he can already said no, the board.
There was a proposal last year that would impact this conversation, was we made a proposal to the South Eagan Board to look at an SAU thirty-nine Y preschool program. To take the, uh, take the Clark preschool program, the Mount Vernon preschool program, and put it on the campus of South Eagan, two or three high schools have done that in New Hampshire. I was not, uh, the, the South Eagan Board was not interested in, in that program.
I would find that a little odd to have a preschool and a high school together.
It actually.
Sometimes they do, like, classroom, the students can help with the.
It's a CTE, it's career tech, early childhood education, um, but I, I'm just saying, but we did try to look at annex efficiency.
So much cheaper, and there's stuff, the eighth graders and the annex, this high school is less students right now, but I, and my other question was, if we did a preschool, would this be a free preschool, or, or would the, the parents be paid for the service?
So, um, typically they're called reverse inclusion preschools. So you need a fifty fifty ratio between those who are in need of service and those who are typically developed. Those who are typically developed pay tuition, and those who qualify their child find, receive free tuition, because it's a certain set of requirements. And you want about a fifty fifty ratio in a preschool.
Uh, can I just go back to the seventh and eighth grade, just to clarify, both uh, the Amherst Board and the South Eagan Board chairpeople said they were no longer interested in continuing that conversation. And so, um, that's where we left it, and the other, as Steve mentioned, there are other things discussed, and, uh, you know, we'll continue to work on this as we work on, you know, the facilities around all three districts in SAU thirty-nine, that's the, you know, all, all four buildings have renovation projects currently being discussed or ongoing or, or need to happen, so just want to say that.
So the committee that looked at adding seventh and eighth grade to local, uh, control talked about additional administration staffing as well, did, did that go away?
We, we're not recommending.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question. At one time, the, the New Hampshire state had a regulation as to the amount of acreage of school property had to have in relation to the number of students that you could have on campus, and I'm wondering if they still do. Uh, and what it is, what to relate, that would be in Mount Vernon.
Great question, I had heard that as well. Um, and, um, that, um, will be Harriman's task to make sure that they design a concept that meets the minimum standards, and it's their licensure right to make sure they do, because I I mean, I heard the same thing, and I'm, uh, I'm not sure where that is right now, to be honest with you.
But if they do have a limit, and we can't build here, then why bother to continue? I mean, I would think that would be the first step.
Yes, and if, and if Harriman, and their job is to conceptually design it that is legal. Because it, um, right, I'm a, I didn't stay at the Holiday Inn last night, but I'm an educator, not an architect and design person. And by a full faith in Harriman to design and let us know, I did ask them, last time I spoke with them, if, um, they had any super concerns about expanding the footprint here to include this stuff ish.
Right.
And they didn't have any immediate alarms, they didn't commit to it, they didn't have any.
I like it.
So the, so the school district in Concord built three elementary schools, and one of them has very, very little
Right.
acreage.
Right. That's what I thought too, I know there's waivers, or they're, right, I, I go by Chris McCollall all the time. So I think we can wrap, so is the board comfortable with at least this stage giving Harriman what we just described as the marching orders? To take a look at a preschool about thirteen hundred square feet, take a look at one class for the bubble, and take a look at a middle school in a second location between gym and cap. World language, we need music, all what we described, are you comfortable with Mike and I and Roger communicating with Harriman to define the Ed specs just for design purposes? And costing purposes, the board will have a million opportunities to refine or say it's just not it. But at this stage, does the educational specifications recommended tonight seem reasonable to begin?
And I think we need to look at as many options as possible, given the numbers and knowing what's happening down the hill, um, so I think we need all our options laid out for us.
Andrew's got his hand up, so you want to go with him? Mr. Tokaj, your sir? Doc share. Thank you, Mr. Tokaj, just sorry about that.
Hello, um, there was, uh, one more thing that was called out, uh, during those calls with the principals, um, and with the discussion with Harriman, the previous, the previous session that was not mentioned. Uh, I think the minor thing is the, uh, additional collaboration spaces for the specialists. We talked about having small places where, like, say, ten or so students, a teacher could have a session.
Thank you, Andrew, I appreciate that, we did add some space in preschool, we added some space in special ed, but I agree, I think. And I think Harriman, and that's in their style of, you know, their work product is, is to put in that space. Um, but we can certainly encourage them to build with collaboration spaces for kids and, and adults, so thank you very much.
And then, um, there was one other thing that I'm, I'm not sure that we want to include, and it hasn't been mentioned. Um, but at least I'd like it to be considered was, uh, any changes to, um, uh, outdoor sports fields that would be required for a middle school. I don't think we should include that, um, you know, my, my recommendation would not be to include that. However, it was asked by Harriman, so I figured we should give them an answer of whether or not we want them to consider that. However, it was asked by Harriman, so I figured we should give them an answer whether or not we want them to consider that.
Thank you. We'll add that to the discussion list when we talk. And thank you very much for both of those.
That was it.
Thank you. Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm good. Do we want to open that up to the, to our last?
Well.
Good for that. So this is going to be round two of public input. If you have any more questions than you've already provided, which have been awesome, or commentary. So we all know public input kind of rolls up in. Right? It's all good. So, but if you have any more, you can, that'd be fine.
I would be really interested in the timeline for Harriman's work. Are we planning to go to the town meeting, the school meeting next spring?
When we had, when we had a board retreat this summer, the, uh, board communicated that they did not believe they would be ready to bring anything to the town in March of two thousand twenty-five. The, um, as we've learned, we really have to have everything done now to start communicating. And Harriman, I think, is about a month, you know, after we give them this information, is a month, maybe a little bit more. And then I worry about costing, not, uh, costing with being adjacent to the time you bring it to the town. Doesn't make sense to spend seven thousand dollars to cost this, if you're going to have to re-cost it if you're bringing it in March of twenty-six. You with me? So, but this year it may be just a conceptual design. Um, and then you cost it, you know, in the fall. And then if you want to bring something, because you don't, we're, we're facing that in another, every year you're refreshing a costing of a project, it costs money. And it doesn't make any sense to cost it if it's not going in March. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So I'm concerned that this was presented to the town as a discussion about adding seventh and eighth grade and the scope has dramatically expanded. And that has not been communicated to the town that the scope is larger.
I, it was under my impression that we would have to build. I mean, that's why I'll check here.
So, but the, the scope of sprinkler systems and storage and security access, this, and preschool, those things were not public, publicly discussed.
I agree with the preschool.
So.
So I think there needs to be some communication about what Harriman is doing and how it will be presented. There's also the question of whether it's socially appropriate for uh, seventh and eighth graders to remain in Mount Vernon. That, I don't know if you looked at that. The whole business about the fifth grader shouldn't be with the sixth, seventh and eighth graders came up. And so is there, is there a seventh and eighth grade being on this side, discussion happening somewhere? Because I know parents have a lot of opinions about this and I don't know if they've been asked to wait.
So I'll, I'll take that. So, and I'll take ownership from the possible lack of communication. I know that for every single building committee meeting that we've had, aside from our regular board meetings, the, the pre-K has always been part of the conversation. I will say, and this is in my opinion, not the board's, that our, my directive has always been priority one is to figure out what the cost of bringing seven and eighth back to this building would be from a building and a staffing perspective. From there, it's, and I, I use the analogy of Legos. So the, the next Lego would be pre-K. How much does that cost? And then the next Lego is, uh, new entryways secure, which quite honestly, my opinion, we're going to be having that conversation sooner than later, whether we do anything of this building or not. So that's another Lego. And then you've got the, the, the additional room, whether it's a cafeteria or whether it's a gymnasium. The, the goal and my hope is that Harriman will come back with a plan that we can look at and with the cost. And my understanding is, and Mr. Chamberlain jumped in, that the cost would be, those elements would be separate, somewhat separating, separated out so that we could determine, okay, if we want to do Plan A, that's going to be this, it's going to be Plan B. It's kind of like a menu option of sorts. You, you're right, there are other things that have cropped up, but some of those are out of our control.
I don't disagree with any of that, but since we don't have a newspaper and communications from the school seem to be non-existent or, or need significantly more updates, quicker updates or.
It's not a problem just with the school. That's a problem with the town altogether.
Absolutely.
So I think that's going to be, would be a, a joint discussion between the school and the town to come up with a way to project all this information to the town.
So I'm in agreement with you all, you know, that, that when we're working on these type of projects, uh, we can partner a little more efficiently with, with the town. It is on, on our radar, my radar as the, the superintendent. Um, and for me, you know, we also knowing that there's a lack of me, mediums to get things to certain audiences that we want. And so we're, we're definitely absolutely exploring that. Like, that resonates with me. I'm with you and, and I'm looking for some ways and opportunities to do that. Uh, we, uh, do a, a communication plan in place that you're going to see a little bit more of as we open up school and, and some more, uh, you know, output on that. And, uh, but the, to that, the timeline, I'll let Steve speak to the timeline of when we partner with the town typically. You know, that in my experience, I'm not saying that's the way it has to be in this particular case. About a little bit about zoom, we roll that out.
No, I agree. I mean, this work, to be completely honest, the scope changed when I was interim superintendent. Twenty-two, the twenty-two report was middle school. And I became interim soup. I spent a lot of the time with Meg Beauchamp and Heather. And then, uh, when I became interim soup, we commissioned a NASDAQ report, which included the bubble. And last year to you, because in last year, I know only about ten people show up to deliver, but during the delivery, we talked about all three of those components. Um, but you're right, we can write more and get it out more. And, and to be honest, the new entry came up, it was early to me because it was a Roger thing. And the sprinkler came up because I didn't even know until like a few months ago, this place wasn't sprinkling.
It's been discussed repeatedly and denied repeatedly. So don't be surprised.
No, no, I, I, I just, part of that is the due diligence for me
Exactly.
is putting it out there. So I know you're going to go.
She's got to go. So if we're going to, if you need a vote, that would be, just do motion, second vote so that Justin can get to work.
To communicate the specs as presented to Harriman would be great.
We'll make that motion.
Take a roll call vote, Mr. Stokinger. Andrew, you in favor of a motion as presented?
Stokinger, no.
Amber, yes.
Pinkley, yes.
Agoff, yes. Passes three to one.
Perfect. And then, uh, once you go, we have to adjourn the meeting. We no longer have a personal forum.
Sorry, folks. Don't wait.
Play about an hour.
Can I have probably one final question? It's taken us thirteen months from the time you go, people got the money to start this till this point. So how long do you anticipate before you'll get any kind of report back from Harriman?
I think their plan was end of September, October.
So like two months. Hope it's me day.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll check in.
All right. That's, that's a fair push, I think, but it's the infamous two weeks scenario of. But we, we understand the importance of it and the timeline of it as well. So it doesn't go unnoticed.
And we really appreciate all the work you're doing.
And, and I'll make it a point that, and that we get an update on the building committee as part of each and every meeting. So at, at least we have a five to eight minute discussion, maybe longer, maybe shorter. Where are we? Because it's important for us as a board, but also important for you folks. And Mr. Stokinger leads, leads the, uh, representation to that committee from the board. So um, I'm comfortable with putting that as, and every, every month we'll have an update on where we are.
And we can use the Mount Vernon flyer, which is a publication that goes to, goes to a lot of people.
We can, we can write something, summarize this work.
I do like my weekly emails from the principal. So perhaps that would be, actually, it, it would be a good option to do a monthly and that would probably reach more people, or at least the interim before something more accessible and available.
You get that because you have a student?
I'm an IT guy.
No, what, you received that information?
Yes, yes.
Because people who don't have student tiers get that.
You, you, my newsletter, you can get on our Facebook page, which is on the website, but there's probably some other angles, like the flyer is a good idea.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
We can write something, probably summarize this. Happy to.
Yeah, it's like the twentieth. I remember that date.
It's the twenty ninth this month.
Yeah, no, we have to get our stuff in by the twentieth and then, so. Continue to work on that. And there are definitely, definitely audiences we want to reach as we do this work and, and as always, if you have any questions, you can email us or give us a call. We'll, we'll all always respond. So, um, Peter, I appreciate it. Let's go, Justin won't get you out of here.
A motion adjourned.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, Andrew, you vote for adjournment tonight's meeting?
Voting for what?
Meeting, meeting adjourned.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
The Pinkley asset.
Yes, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, folks. We appreciate.